Conducting this meeting under the amended substitute House Bill 197 that allows us to do telephone conference, video conferences. And this meeting is a meeting of the West Jaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Jaga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please use the chat room function located at the bottom of the webpage if you'd like to be recognized for public participation. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Dr. Beers?
Here.
Mr. Ramey?
Here.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Would you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
None.
Okay. Reports and presentations, we have something from Sean on the middle school office relocation. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Kish, for putting that up. So, one of the things we're taking a look at over the summer at each of our buildings actually is how to handle the safest possible interactions when visitors need to come to our buildings or items need to be dropped off, for example. When we take a look at Westwood and Lindsay, for example, we're adding pass-through windows from the outside of the building and glass sneeze guards at the office counters to enhance that interaction. We're looking at, in the hallway, and actually you can see it on the slide that's in front of you right now, in the hallway at the high school, we're looking to put pass-through windows in the main hallway in between the main entry door and the door that separates the main hallway from the building at both the attendance office and the main office to allow items to be passed through in the building without necessarily having to go into those offices. Also, at the main board office, we are looking to put a pass-through window at the board office reception area, right at the main entrance as well, to protect our staff who would be interacting with visitors as they come through our building. That leads us to the middle school. So, when we get to the middle school, and actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Kish, can you go back one slide? The screen cards that we're going to be installing are going to be of various sizes to fit the building, and basically they look like that, where they're going to have the pass-through window run along the bottom. I just thought for a visual, let people know what we're looking to do. Ours will be larger than what's in the picture, but it's just more to get a visual idea of what we're looking at. Thanks, Jim. So, when we look at the middle school, we have a different challenge at the middle school. The middle school, we have a long hallway when we go into the building that is before you get to any staff members, we go through this main hallway of the cafeteria, straight to the first hallway, we hang a left and go into the main office. That's a health and safety concern as far as entering that particular building, especially in a year where we really need to be looking at traffic control for people coming into our buildings. So, one of the things we're looking at are what are some cost-effective projects to rework the offices and their location to control visitors into the building and allow people to have the same interactions they would at the other buildings in our district. So, the first thing we were taking a look at, what kind of construction can we do to put the offices over near the area where they used to be? The slide that you see right now, you're going to see the image that's there is really right outside the board office door. That arrow points to the middle school doors that are right over on that side of the building. When you enter into those doors, there's two doors, with a vestibule in between them. What we're looking to do is take advantage of that vestibule, so visitors would enter into the first door of the vestibule. We would be putting in a doorway in between those two doors into that first classroom that's pictured there. In that classroom, visitors could be buzzed in, there would be a waiting area, there would be a counter that would be there with a wall that would allow pass-through. It would be a pass-through window that would protect the staff that's in there, but allow visitors to drop off items, receive items from the building. Also connected, there would be a wall that would be put in where the two classrooms are connected, allowing for the principal's office to be in the next classroom. So, that's the construction that we're looking to put in in that particular room. It's approximately a $20,000 project to put that in, and that's what the construction piece would be. Also, in that room, what we need to do is rework some of the electrical in that room. We would be proposing putting in a new 220 amp panel in the office area. For anybody who's spent any time in our middle school, the wiring in the middle school is very congested. There are large conduits that run throughout the building that are just overloaded. This would facilitate not only this project, but future projects. From our master planning, this is one of the buildings that's going to remain online. We were looking at this as being an elementary building in the future. So, this office area that we're building could be expanded in the future to include a clinic, it could be expanded in the future to include a conference room. So, we want the panel that we put in to be able to facilitate future projects. We would be reworking all of the network security and phone lines that come into that room, also installing circuits for outlets needed in the office because they wouldn't necessarily be in the locations that would be conducive to an office area. LED lighting would also be installed in this room. The service that would be put in there also would be providing service for the roof that can be used for air conditioner condensers because there's no AC in that room right now. So, that would be approximately $12,000 to take care of the electrical portion of that. The last piece we'd be looking at is an HVAC upgrade in that room. This would involve the install of two new Carrier 410A ductless split systems to service each office. These will work with the UNI vents that are in place there to provide heat, but are also mainly there to cool the rooms. The scope of the work in this case would include the roof work to necessarily, to support the weight of these items, piping, drain connections, and connecting to the new electrical system. So, that's about an $18,000 project. We have been talking for the past few years for security reasons about moving these offices. There's another reason to do it now in light of COVID-19 because it's really the one building that if we're trying to provide the same level of service to our visitors to the building while at the same time minimizing unnecessary, people unnecessarily coming to our buildings, it's the hardest to do at the middle school because of the way that the office is currently so distant from any doorway to get in. So, that's why we're really looking heavily at this project. And do you have any questions?
Will that move all of the offices, the principal's offices, then secretary, et cetera, to that location, Sean?
It would move, it would move the two administrative assistants over there into the main first off, the first classroom that is being utilized there. That's where that waiting area would be, and then the room next door would be the principal's office. The nurse's office would remain in the current office where it's at right now. One of the things we're going to need for COVID-19 is, it's one of the requirements, is actually that we are going to need an additional clinic area in case students were identified as having symptoms of COVID-19. So, that would actually open up some space that we could use to facilitate adding an additional clinic over there for now.
So, that's how the other, the offices that would be vacated by the principal would be utilized?
That's one of the ways that we would use those office areas, yes.
Okay.
If I recall too, Sean, wasn't the building originally kind of designed that you would come in that entrance?
Yes, actually, one of the classrooms over in that area was the original office that's over there. It's on the opposite side of the hallway. The reason why we wouldn't put it back in that location is because we want to take advantage of the vestibule now and be able to use that as a buzz-in, buzz-out door. So, it really allows us a different opportunity to control traffic in the way now. But yes, that was the original entrance to the building.
When you went in there, Dan, you'd go in the door and turn to the right in that hallway, and then an immediate left, so the office was kind of in the interior, but it was right basically at that, at that entrance, at the doorway.
Sean, are many splits being used because they're economical for disuse, or as we get into other projects in that building, do the split systems look like they're a possible option?
We haven't, we haven't looked at it for other applications in our buildings. We were looking specific to this project. So, being honest with you, Ben, I don't know the answer as far as spreading them out to other areas in our building. We were looking specifically at this office area when, at the time we were doing it.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious because in the last, maybe the last decade, it's become a very, you know, a very big way to deliver heating and cooling, so.
So, on this end, it was really a cost-effective approach.
I think it's a great idea. Weren't we going to do this before, Rich, before we were looking at the master plan?
Yes, yes. It was a more costly project. I give a lot of credit to Mark and Sean here because they've, they've figured out a way to do this, this a bit less elaborate, but provides the same functionality at a fraction of the cost.
Yeah, actually, I am impressed, Sean. Is that like the whole budget is $36,000? Or what is?
It's a little bit more than that. It's a little under 50 when you took, took off all three portions.
Yeah, still pretty impressive.
Any other questions? This is a low enough amount, Sean, that you do not need to send it out for bid, is that correct, or what's the next steps?
We have to get quotes, so we're in the process of that. We've got multiple quotes for the project right now. We're waiting on, we have to get at least three quotes, so we're waiting on that particular portion of it at the moment.
And if there should be any overruns to over, I mean, this is ambitious to do at $50,000, and I think if anybody can do it, it's you and Sean, Sean and you and Mark, but if this goes a little bit over, are we okay that way as well, or is that something has to be approved by the board?
It won't go over.
Good answer, Rich.
We've actually been very adamant about this project, and actually, to Rich's point earlier, Mark has done a lot of legwork at making this work under those parameters, mainly because of the fact that we're well aware right now that we're, we have a lot of expenses relating to COVID-19. So, any projects that we're doing right now that are relating to this, we're trying to do them as cost-effective as possible. And this was a project that was tabled before because of the expenses Rich alluded to. So, being able to look at it again and get the benefit of helping us during these COVID-19 times, but also improving security is a big reason to do this.
Great. There any opportunity to get funding to help pay for this through either COVID or security or somebody or other?
Oh, Phil, you are so funny. That's a good joke.
I think Mr. Thorson just volunteered to help.
He did. You have his full and uncompromising support.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Sean. We'll look forward to seeing the quotes come in.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Kish, I'm hearing some issues with the audio. I don't know if other folks are hearing it as well or not.
I'm hearing it too, but it does, everyone else appears to be muted except for board members, Rich and Karen.
Okay, so. Move on to the public remarks. Jim, has anybody indicated that they wish to speak?
There is nobody in the Zoom chat group.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the routine items. Karen, Resolution 182?
Yes, Resolution 182 to approve routine matters of the West Jaga Local Board of Education to approve the May 2020 financial statements along with the board minutes from May 28th.
So moved.
Second.
There any discussion? To call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 183 to approve the warrants for May 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? To call the roll, please?
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 184 to accept the donations to include the Chester's Lion Club and the Giant Eagle?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? To call the roll, please?
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Resolution 185 to approve the establishment of new funds for fiscal year 2021. They'll include a O22, which is agency fund, which is on the Newberry books now, and then Fund 509, which is Title IV, Part B, 21st Century Learning Center. That is now included in Fund 599, and the auditors are moving it to a separate fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions for Karen on these?
Yeah, just Karen, is there anything we should know about the moving of Newberry funds into West Jaga funds?
We've been working on the financial transfer of the actual funds that are coming over. Right now, they're in the process of closing all of the books over there in association. So, they're closing all the purchase orders, they're paying off all the contracts that they have. What we'll have coming over is we'll have excess funds that are coming over. So, there may have, like in this case, an agency fund that may have a couple of thousand dollars in it. They're writing a check from their PTOs to our PTOs, they're making a donation to our PTOs. The athletic funds, they've tried to spend all those down. So, any of the student funds or anything that we have in the Student Activity Fund, they've tried to spend those down, or they'll be transferred over into our funds. Now, this one, I didn't have, I didn't have an agency fund, but they did. So, we're trying to mirror all that, you know, move that over. They've done a pretty good job in either allocating that out to us or to spend that on the students for Newberry. The one thing that we will have some issues with is that they have restricted funds that are similar to ours, like they're either through a grant or they're through, on our federal grants, we've moved those over. Nancy and I worked with the Department of Education to move those over. They are now included in our grants for next year. And then the other work is the auxiliary funds. We've been working with ODE to get those moved over to our, because we're, we're the agency for those funds, so that will be done as well. So, we're taking them one at a time. There may be some restricted funds that we have to figure out why they're restricted. We have some of those and that have been on the books for a long time, and you have to remember why they were put on the books that way. So, we may have some issues with those, but they're very small. So, we are working with Mr. Wilson and their, their accounts payable and payroll people. So, I think we're all cautiously optimistic as we transfer the.
Are there any grants or anything that Newberry got that we wouldn't be eligible for because West G may have some different demographics?
No, the, what we see is the reallocation of the Title I funds and, because normally the funds, we were looking at those from a federal fund standpoint, and we just added those over, you know, special ed added over. Where we see the reallocation is in the Title I funds because that's based on a percentage of what you're talking about, free reduced lunch programs. And so, when we, they had a higher free and reduced lunch program just because of their numbers. Now, they're added to ours, and so we, we saw a little bit of reduction in our funding. It wasn't just Newberry comes over and adds stars, they reallocated it. So, we see a little bit of loss, but there, again, their funding was, I'd like to say it's, you know, under 30,000, and ours was a hundred and something thousands. We're just, we're moving that over. As we look at the CARES Act funding, that may be an area where there are changes because of the numbers adding together. So, for example, the non-publics are, there's two, we talked about this, that there's two methods for allocating the CARES funding, one on based on free and reduced lunch and one based on total students. And so, we've had to allocate based on total students. That one, OD is relooking at for us because St. Helens was going to receive 20, what is it, $21,000 of the $55,000 of funding that Newberry was getting, and that's based purely on the number of kids. When they come over to us on, in 2021, that allocation would be much smaller. So, they're looking to see if that should be, if that should be adjusted. And there's also a lawsuit associated with that from the state suing the federal government over that allocation as well.
Karen, I don't know if this is a good time, but, but come July 1st, everything that's still there belongs to West Jaga, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I had heard, I'm sorry about that, that's going to get loud. I had heard that there was, there was a move this weekend to have residents come and take things that they would like from Newberry. Is there any truth to that?
No, they had a rummage sale. So, Sean and Mark had worked with them to identify items that we would not need to come over, and like they did, they sold uniforms, they sold photographs, and I know Jim had spent some time with them digitizing all of that. So, they worked with Jim and Sean and Mark to make sure that they were not selling anything that West Jaga would, would want or need in our school, in our classrooms. So.
I just heard that.
You know, there were a couple of things that people were interested in, like the giant night stand, you know, so they were, they were pretty good about that. And then we, in light of some of the COVID-19, we even went back over there, and Sean and Mark went back over there to look at the classrooms to see that we may need some of the additional desk and things. So, I feel, and Sean, maybe you can say, you know, if there's anything different to that, but I feel comfortable that that was taken care of and consulted with, with West Jaga.
They've been very accommodating to us, Karen. You said that very well. That's anything that, when they were looking to do these sales, they reached out to us, they gave us the opportunity to come over and be a partner in that. Basically, anything that we said would benefit all of our students for instruction for the following year, they were very amenable to making sure they protected so that it would come over here. They've, they've really been terrific in that part of the process.
Okay, I think we've got a motion and a second for this resolution. There any other questions? Let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Ben, you're on mute.
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 186 to approve the final appropriations for the fiscal year 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions about this? Karen, you give us a thumbnail as to what this is about?
Yes, every year we close out the books, make sure we've got all the purchase orders, close it can be, and pay all the bills, and it's kind of a mad rush for that last week. So, we'll have a total appropriations of $29,139,500, and that will be the closeout for the 2020 school year. The general fund, and this just breaks it up by fund, we appropriate all of our money based upon a fund basis, so this is, just breaks it out, and so we're not allowed to spend more than we appropriate. So, a lot of, you know, we take a few adjustments. So, you'll see that adjusting column, you'll see the last one that you approved, which was $30,009, and then the final one, which was $29,001. A lot of those changes that are coming along in there are really reductions that we've made this year or allocations on projects that we did not pursue.
Any other questions? To call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution 187 to approve the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All right, this one's a little bit different. As we've talked about when we discussed the five-year forecast last year, we're going to, normally we would do a permanent appropriation. At this time, due to COVID-19 uncertainty and how we're going to reopen the schools, most of the treasurers, I'd say 90% of the treasurers in Lake and Jaga County, we've all talked, we're putting the temporary appropriations in. They are full appropriations based upon our five-year forecast that was approved by the board in May. However, we may have staffing changes that will adjust this. We may have certainly supplies that we're looking at. You'll see the middle school project, that'll now be added to those things. So, we will have some adjustments to this. Our final appropriation is not due to the county until September 30th, and at that time, we'll be in a good position to update our five-year forecast. In November, we'll do that, but we'll be updating the appropriation as well. And we'll also know at this point, we'll have the second half of the 2019 taxes. We'll have those collections in to see where we are, and in addition to that, we hopefully, we still don't know what the foundation funding looks like for 2021. I believe I sent you an email that we did get a reduction of our budget cut, if that's a way to say that, of $257,000. We received that back. We've got our first payment of $92,000 back already, just so you know that. But, so you will see a, an adjusted or a permanent appropriation come through sometime. It'll come back to you in September.
Karen?
Yes.
When does an appropriation from the state become fixed? In other words, when, is there any point where they can, where they're obligated to pay us what they say they will?
Well, we found that out that, no, there's not. They make, you know, like, for example, this year for the foundation payment, we, we received our cuts in May, and that was obviously due to budget cuts that they needed to make because they have to balance the budget. So, I, I, you know, once they give us the money, you know, that's one thing, but even that didn't work because they took, you know, we had to pay it back. So, they can take it back anytime, I guess.
So, depending on the economy, depending on the, how the state decides to balance the budget, it's all up in the air in terms of that portion of our budget?
Yeah, and that's unusual. I mean, we, that's the first time I've had this happen in the five years I've been here. It's, but it's happened before. It's, you know, it's happened before, from what I understand. So, this was just late in the game. You know, we're hoping that for next year, they're, they're looking at what their collections are going to be through June. They did have obviously an uptick in June of sales tax as people went back to purchasing, went back, you know, as things are reopening. The lottery was up, you know, so scratch-off tickets were up even though the casinos were down, just so you know. So, we're getting some indications that there is a recovery in the sales tax are coming back in, the income taxes are coming back in, but we do have to be cautious. I mean, I will say that Jaga County's unemployment tax, unemployment rate for May was 17.1%, which was significant. In February, it was 6%. So, we've had a significant increase in unemployment, which obviously impacts income taxes and those income taxes going to the state, just in our county. So, I, we will, we are told to expect our budget cuts. We just don't know how much they're going to be.
Any other questions? To call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 188 to approve the West Jaga Elementary School fees for the 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
We'll say, just so I can make a comment, earlier in May, the principals, Megan and Deborah, came to Nancy and myself and said, "We want to do something different with our school fees. We realize that families may be hurting through this process by a job loss, and we want to reduce our fee." And we know that school supplies are maybe difficult to find during this time, and they may, they're expensive. So, what they did was work with their staff to reduce their fees. So, this fee that you're seeing is $45 for K2, and the $55 for 35 also includes their school supplies. So, we are, they've worked with their students, saying, you know, "This is the minimum that we need so that families will be able to pay a weekly fee, and that will take care of their school supply list as well." So, you won't have that crazy rush to target a Walmart, trying to find that green folder and the yellow markers. You won't have that crazy rush to, uh, target a Walmart, trying to find that green folder and the yellow markers and all that kind of stuff, so. Oh, that's kind of fun, but, uh, they really did an exceptional job and, and really trying to keep in mind that. This is unusual time for, for our families. So I appreciate their, their work in that. I know the middle school and high school are still looking at their fees. We'll expect those next month. We're looking at the same types of reductions. Um, just keeping in mind that this is a difficult time for some of our families.
Hey, would you, uh, call the roll, please, then?
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Dr. Mark, it's up to you.
Personnel resolutions, resolution one eighty-nine is to accept a non-exempt staff resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
What, do we have a replacement?
Not yet.
This is a big loss.
Pardon me?
It's a big loss.
We will, we will find someone good.
Okay.
We have until the end of August. He's staying through the end of August.
Yes, we appreciate that. He would, he made it a, a long to get us through the summer. He's, uh, he, Mr. Cooper's been spending a great deal of time. Getting the Newberry students transferred into our EMIS system, um, and I believe they're there. And, um, so he's really, um, taking ownership of this data coming through and moving that over.
Nice letter thanking him for his service.
Absolutely, yeah.
Hey, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution one ninety is to approve administrative contract recommendations.
So moved.
Second. Rich, um, do we have an active policy committee now or individual who's going over this with the? Uh, with the administration?
Are you talking the administrative contract recommendations?
All, all the recommendations.
You've never had.
Well, typically, we've had somebody who's responsible in terms of policy who's gone over those.
Board policies, but this is administrative contracts.
Yeah.
I mean, we do policies.
Yeah, you policy.
Bill and I.
That's been chat, but not.
Okay, you guys are going over the policies.
You're on the right, we're on the different resolution here.
Right. No, no, I, I, uh, had, had assumed that they would have gone over that with you, did they?
No, no, we go over the policies, not the administrative contract.
Right, right. Okay.
We've never done.
What about you as president, Bill? Did you go over this?
I, I talked to Rich and Karen about it at our agenda meeting, yes. These, these are contracts that, um, because of the, the timing of when individuals' contracts expire. We traditionally have, and maybe always, have, uh, given the contracts. Like extended the contracts before their last day, so that they know that they've got a job, uh, going forward. You know, they overlap.
Sure, sure. Okay, so that, that's good. I, I did not have time to call Rich on this, or you, Bill. And so, uh, I felt pretty uninformed, so. I'm, I'm fine, as long as the, uh, procedure is you've gone over it, and Rich and Karen have looked it over and explained it to you as president.
Yeah.
It's pretty standard, Ben.
It's standard.
Yeah, but I, I just didn't have time to, uh, to make any inquiries or to really spend time with it. Because it is standard, but, uh, it's important.
Yes, I mean, this, this slate has my full support. I, I believe I mentioned that in my update as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
And some of them, you know, when I, for instance, when I first saw this, I'm gonna pick on, uh, Mrs. Bellin, I go, wait a minute, didn't we just give her a contract? Then Rich was, well, yes, but. You, when the first person first moves into the job, you don't give them a three-year contract, you give them a shorter contract. And that shorter contract is at the point now where we need to, uh, give them a longer contract, otherwise they're looking for a new job. And so that's the case with, um, I'm gonna say two of these, I don't remember for, for sure, but clearly for her. Uh, that, uh, you know, we don't want her out looking for a new job this fall, so we give her the contract now. To assure her that she's got a contract with us for three years. And the same is true for the others, but they may not have had a, a shorter contract. Uh, before, but it's still the same concept.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution one ninety-one is to approve the manager-director contract recommendations listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions here? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution one ninety-two is to approve the twenty-twenty summer opportunities stipulations.
So moved.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yeah.
Resolution one ninety-three is to approve athletic supplemental contracts for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
So moved.
Second?
I'm gonna take Mr. Ramey as the second.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Ramey's dog is the second.
That's whose dog it is, huh?
Would you mute yourself, please?
My dog is not the one barking. My dog is the one that.
I think it's Ben's dog.
You can hear my dog. I'll, I'll mute it after the vote.
Yeah, would you just mute, mute and then wave, wave your hand when you vote?
No, yeah. Okay, this signifies yes, so, uh, when we're ready.
Blink twice if you need help.
Would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, we'll need you to say yes, I'm sorry.
Oh.
All right, Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution one ninety-four is to approve athletic service contracts for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? To call the roll, please?
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Position one ninety-five is to authorize the award of the Assistant Football Middle School Service Contract for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions here? To call the roll, please?
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution one ninety-six is a resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding between the West Jaga Board of Education. And the West Jaga Education Association with regard to supplemental contracts for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. This was necessitated by the uncertainties posed by COVID-19.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? To call the roll, please?
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
And, uh, Dr. Mark, do I understand correctly that now that we have the, uh, this MOU signed? And the coaches' contracts approved, that we can begin our athletic practices? In full accord of the state and our Jaga Health Board?
We will be getting phase one of those, um, this week, and then we are rapidly moving into phase two. So, um, we are, are right on track with that. I want to give a tip of the hat to Ben Stahura, who's our athletic director. And to Sean Whalen, who have kept up with, um, all of the things that we needed to do there and, and made sure that we were doing so in compliance with the Health Department. And our insurance provider. I also want to thank the, um, WGEA because we concluded this MOU very quickly. And that was due to the cooperation we had from the WGEA. I was grateful for the way they worked with us on that.
Okay, thank you. I know there have been a lot of questions, uh, in the community as why we hadn't started practices yet. So now we are able to do so.
Now that we have our coaches in place, we are able to do so, yes.
Right. Okay.
A lot of football activity out my window right here. A lot of, a lot of movement of equipment's going on.
They're excited.
I think they started already, like right now.
They were watching the meeting.
Stream and they, they, uh, they gave the hug sign.
Rich, is there a point where you can, uh, and doesn't have to be tonight, but where you, Sean, or whoever's appropriate, tell us what phase two looks like? Because we understand phase one.
And a lot of this posted on the website. If you, if you want to get some specific details, including the waiver forms that students are asked to sign. Um, there's a, there's a great deal of information out there, but I'll make sure you get steered to it, Ben.
Okay, uh, let's move on, Rich, to one ninety-seven.
One ninety-seven is the resolution that deals with policy. It is a resolution to approve the first reading of the revised board policies fifteen-twenty. Twenty-four sixty-four, thirty-one twenty, thirty-one twenty oh four, thirty-one twenty oh five, thirty-one twenty oh eight, forty-one twenty. Forty-one twenty oh eight, forty-one twenty-four, forty-one sixty-two, fifty-four sixty, sixty-one oh seven, and new board policies. Fifty-four sixty oh two and seventy-four forty oh three. I'll remind the board, we have three readings of these policies. This is the first reading, which I want to have them on the agenda, so the clock is ticking. Between the first and second, um. Dr. Beers, Mr. Ramey and I will meet to go over them and to address any issues that we feel need to be tweaked, to bring them into. Compliance and to, um, conformity with our own past practices. And then there will be a second reading for the board, and then a third. At which time they will be finally approved by the board.
I, for one, am looking forward to our new drone policy.
Yes.
I think that was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions about the policies? Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
I would encourage you to look over the policies, and if you have questions, to please get them to, uh, Dr. Mark Art. Um, so that when we sit down to review them, we have them more or less all together. There's quite a few of them there. I believe, Rich, that the, the changes are in green. And that looked like what the color coding was to me. So as you're scanning through things, that might be the place to kind of. You know, direct your eyes towards first to see, and then red is stuff that's crossed out as well.
And a good practice is to compare them to the existing policies to see where they may deviate and to render opinions related to that.
Yeah. Okay. Business resolutions, one ninety-eight.
Resolution one ninety-eight is to approve the agreement between West Jaga Local School District and the ESC of the Western Reserve for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? To call the roll, please?
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
All right, Board Resolution one ninety-nine to approve the Ohio School Plan Member Resolution Regarding Employee Dishonesty. And Faithful Performance of Duty Policy in Luve a Bond.
So moved.
Second.
So this, uh, typically, we've had bonds. So I've been bonded for a hundred thousand, and then. Rich and the board has, they have, you've all been bonded, so it's expensive, uh, to do so. And you're personally liable for that bond if, um, in fact, you don't. You, you, you haven't, or basically, something happens and, uh, you have an, an issue related to that. So let's say my hundred thousand or your fifty thousand, if, um, there was a problem, then you would be personally liable for that amount of money. And they could go after your house. So, um, this happened, this was a, a, a case with a treasurer that had, uh. Paid for an employee that didn't have a proper license, that the superintendent had hired. And so this came about with some changes in the law, and, uh, since the treasurer paid. The, the employee after the superintendent hired them, uh, they came after that treasurer's. Assets to pay for that bond. So the state, uh, legislature changed. The law that said you no longer had to be bonded, we could have actual insurance coverage for that. And this is the resolution to make that happen from our policy. So it changes our policy where we're not requiring bonds of. Uh, the treasurer and the superintendent and the board, and we're allowing an insurance policy, a crime policy to be put in place. Um, or, or a dishonesty and a performance, uh, policy to be put in place in lieu of a bond. So I'd like to keep my house, um, so if you could do this, I would appreciate it.
Were you planning on doing something that would cause you to have your house taken away?
Can tell it was the superintendent that hired the person without the proper license, so it was the treasurer, however, that got, uh, that lost them. You know, was in jeopardy of losing her house, so.
Clarification, that was not this superintendent.
And it wasn't this treasurer.
Those are other people.
So, uh, but this is something that was archaic in the light, in, in the law, and this is something they, they took care of, uh, last year.
Is there any, um, gap in between the insurance taking over and the bond?
No, you, we have bonds in place, mine's still in place till twenty twenty-two, um, which is when my contract goes up. And then you have bonds through the next year. So this will, we'll put in a policy starting next, uh, in, in July. It'll come back to you for that, and then we'll have that in place. There won't be any gap in coverage.
Okay, any other questions? To call the roll, please?
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution two hundred to approve sponsorship and merger or termination of the Newberry. School District plans following the Newberry Local School District transfer of territory to the West Jaga Local School District.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, during the transfer, Newberry has its own retirement plans, like a four oh three B. Which is like a fourth, you know, a four oh one K. They have a four fifty-seven, and they also have a flexible spending account. So those are their own kind of entities that are operated by Newberry. And so they are the plan administrator. So what has to happen in this, we could terminate them, we could transfer them. And so what we're choosing to do, because the termination, um, is long and lengthy, is we're transferring those. Plan sponsorships, uh, basically to West Jaga. So we'll be responsible for those plans, their assets will transfer over to our plans. Uh, the flexible spending account, the, that'll allow them to transfer the, the cash over from that plan as well, and so this. Uh, will be, will now be in charge of those plans. In addition, Newberry is also doing the, a similar resolution. On the twenty-ninth to make that transfer happen. This will be beneficial to the Newberry employees because they won't have to. If we were to terminate their plans, we would have had to liquidate their, their investments and then. Issue them a check, and then they would have to reinvest it into another plan, so that's, that saves that step. So their plans will transfer over, they'll then start anew in our plan as well, and be able to choose our investing. Providers from the list of plans that we have available to us.
So then we become the administrators for their plans, it's not that they, that that money is transferred into our existing plans?
It will be transferred. We had a couple of options of doing what you're saying. We could have transferred their whole plan and then had, run two separate plans. But that again creates some issues in that we would be responsible for the distributions out of that plan. Uh, so what we're gonna do is transfer their plan in, their accounts into our plan.
So it's more like a rollover?
Right.
Okay.
It eliminates their need to do the rollover, though, and we'll still be responsible for the distributions, but we have a third-party administrator that will. Uh, look at those to make sure that the proper distributions are taken care of.
Yeah. And Karen, that is for all employees, even employees that may be rifted?
Yes, it's for everyone who is in, it's, and even those employees that are retired. So these are investments that people. Yes, it's for everyone who is in, it's, and even those employees that are retired. So these are investments that people have made over the years. Uh, so we will now be responsible for those, just like we are for the retirees of ours and those that are current employees. And we use a third-party administrator plan connect. It's run by AXA, and what they do is they confirm that there's proper distributions coming out of that plan. That's why we, we use them. They're also confirming that no one exceeds the limits, their IRS limits, so they won't have taxable, you know, distribution, so, um, and we made that change, uh, a couple of years ago. We made, and as we do this, we're also going to have to change some of our plan, uh, language, just to make sure we've got everything taken care of. We're working with Walter Haverfield. They have an employee benefit specialist, uh, Petra Bradley, um, who does a lot of mergers and acquisitions. So I've been working with her over the past, um, couple of weeks to get this done.
Any other questions? To call the roll, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Rich?
There are just a couple of updates I'd like to give the board tonight that relate to committees that have been established. The board had asked me to compose a committee to study the future of the Newberry campus and to make recommendations to the board. Um, I'm pleased to report to the board that we reached out to a number of individuals in the West Jaga community, inclusive of Newberry Township, um, to put together a group that we felt would be capable of studying the, um, future use of the buildings and exploring options, um, and then making some presentations of information to the board. I, I'd like to point out that this is not a decision-making body. This is purely an advisory body that's being put together at the board's request. I will head it. Um, and we will be looking at the, um, potential uses of the Newberry campus and then reporting back to the, um, the, uh, Board of Education. This is not in any way done to supplant, um, any discussions that are underway. It's just merely to have options open so that as we move forward, um, we can act in a way that's responsible, um, toward both all the residents of West G and the residents of, of Newberry Township in particular. There's another committee also that's being formed. Um, this one's really being spearheaded by, by Sean Whalen. Um, it's a task force committee that relates to the reopening of school in the fall. This is a committee that has several representatives on it that include both staff and parents from West Jaga schools. And what we're trying to do here is, is lay out the plans for the reopening of school in the fall. The governor has stated that schools will reopen, um, but they may reopen in some formats that are somewhat new to us and creative. And so we're looking at that now. We're coming up with the options, and we're gaining input from our staff and from our parents, um, and from the survey that we have already gleaned information from that will help us to shape this, and the board will be hearing, uh, more information from this very soon. Because obviously the time is a-ticking, and while it's, uh, while it's only June, the reopening of school is, is just around the corner. One thing I will put on the board's radar is that there is the possibility that we could be changing slightly the start date of school. Um, it's, it's not a decision that we have made yet to recommend to the board, but it's one which we will be deciding within the next week. Um, we do not see school opening any earlier. Some districts are looking at an earlier start to school than we. We could see it if there is a change, and it being a change that would postpone the start of school till, uh, right after Labor Day. So we will make a recommendation to the board within the next week, uh, with regard to that. But I wanted the board to have an idea of the, the two committees being formed, knowing that they'll both be up and functioning soon. I was pleased to say that everyone that we approached to be on the, um, committee studying the, um, Newberry campus and the potential uses of that campus and, and, um, and, and how they could best, uh, benefit all of the students of, of West Jaga and the residents of West Jaga, including Newberry, as I say, um, we're very enthusiastic. Everyone that we invited to join the committee has willingly signed on. So I'll get the board a slate of those once it's finalized, but, um, right now, we, we, we have a real good representation of people from throughout Jaga County to serve on that.
Two, two questions. Um, when you mentioned the second committee, you said West Jaga parents, I'm assuming, um, and hopefully now whenever we say West Jaga, we just automatically assume that, that that's West Jaga is our whole school system, and that's including Newberry, that you have Newberry parents on the school opening?
The first meeting is a meeting of tomorrow, and Sean and I discussed today the needs to, for the next meeting, which will be in, uh, another probably week or two weeks, there will be representatives from Newberry on it, because at that time, after July first, they will also be representatives of Jaga County, not just the parents from Newberry, but also some of the people who serve, uh, in the capacity of, um, law enforcement, fire protection, etc. We want them to be involved as well. So yes, they're going to be involved. Um, the first meeting, which will be tomorrow for the kickoff, um, because of the date, we'll have people who are currently in the district. The next meeting will include people who are in the district, who will also include the Newberry residents.
And my other question has to do with the first, um, your first committee. Uh, we've just been through this involved survey, um, discussions with the Newberry Board and with the Newberry Township Trustees. Is how are you utilizing that material? I mean, that's all on the, on the table as far as what this committee is looking at?
It'll be utilized, and they also have representation on this committee. So the Newberry Township Board of Trustees is represented on the committee as well.
Okay.
Then yes, of course, we're using that. We didn't, we wouldn't throw out the results of that survey. And that's why I'm saying this is an advisory committee. It's looking at several options, um, that we can advise the board of what those options would be, but this is not a decision-making committee. The ultimate responsibility for this really lies with the, the, um, West Jaga Board of Education, as you know.
I just want to make sure, sometimes when somebody sees that a, a new committee's being formed, they think, oh, we just went through. We just went.
Mr. Kish?
Got it. We just went through all of this, and, and, uh, now what are you doing? Tossing it out and starting all over again, or you're not paying attention to what we said? So I, I, I'm just, I know that you're gonna do it, but I think when you talk about it, you need to make sure that people understand that you're taking that information, uh, and moving forward from, from there.
Right. That, that's a portion of this, certainly. Keep in mind, this committee I'm forming at the request of the board to report back to the board, um, what the options are. But right now, um, the option that is, that is, um, on the table and very viable has been one that, as I understand it, expresses an interest amongst the Newberry Township Trustees of, of perhaps, um, helping to chart and or plan a future for that building. And I know the board's in discussion, so nothing that I'm, that we are doing now in this committee will derail that in any way, shape, or form. It's just that we have to be prepared for the fact that, we have to have a, a list of alternatives ready, because as the board has stated, the, the ownership of that building in terms of its maintenance, et cetera, cannot go on indefinitely. There has to be a plan in place, and there has to be a course of action. And certainly what has been done thus far will be a major portion of any discussions going forward. But thanks for pointing that out, Kathy, because we'll certainly include it.
Any other questions for Rich? Okay, thank you, Rich. Um, moving on to, uh, board reports. Um, I sent you the final report from Burgess and Burgess, uh, on the West G Newberry surveys and brainstorming. Um, don't know if you had a chance to digest it yet. I realize I sent it to you, uh, just a few days ago. And as I mentioned when I sent it, I was still trying to sort out some of the things in my own mind as to what it was saying. I, since, uh, then have, uh, done as Kathy would have probably projected, and created some new graphs. Which is just a different way maybe of, of looking at some of the data that I, I can send you, uh, uh, also to maybe help you think through what's there. But is there any particular items that you saw when reading through it at this point that you wanted to, uh, discuss tonight, or, uh, are you, uh, wanting to review it more before we have any discussion on it?
I, one thing that, that stood out to me right at the front end bill was that, um, it looked, they said that forty percent of the respondents were Newberry residents, fifteen percent were West G residents, and the other forty-five percent were from who knows where. I mean, Kinston or, how did that happen? I mean, um, you know, why, why would we have, have allowed people who, who don't, aren't even residents of, of either school district to be involved in, in responding?
I think that was, I think that was just the last part of the survey. The, uh, and yeah.
I mean, I don't care what part of it it was.
I, I understand what you're saying, and that, that struck me too. And I, I guess I don't, um, I don't have an answer for that at this point. I, uh, I can go back to Burgess and Burgess and ask them of, about, uh, screening on location and see if, uh, we can process it with, uh, just residents of the two primary, well, three townships. Actually, I guess there's parts of others as well, but my point is the existing West Jaga School District and the existing Newberry School District. I was surprised how many, what percentage there was from other locations.
Yeah.
Yes, as they were alumni.
Uh, yeah, but that's, that's still, if they're not living in the district, um, they could have some, what to do with, with various things that, that are being let go, but to move forward, they're not living in the, in the district, so.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not trying to justify their presence or, or not. I'm just suggesting that that's who it was. And they, as, as alumni, I'm sure they have an emotional attachment to, to the, the school and the district.
Sure.
Well, and there were also people throughout the county who saw the buildings as potentially useful. People who wanted to use, for instance, the auditorium, people who had other ideas for the buildings, for sports, for, uh, for various other uses. So I think that's probably one of the other reasons why we attracted outside people.
Yeah.
But, but if she can, but if Dean can take that information and give us just what West G, future West G, you know, the consolidated district, uh, thinks, that would really be helpful. I agree, Kathy.
Yeah. Well, I didn't, I, I mean, I know there were, there were comments from some of the Newberry residents saying that they thought it should only be Newberry, and I, and I, I I did disagree with that because, I mean, I mean, our taxpayers are going to be, uh, footing the bill, and, and it's all merged together, but, but I, I think that, that concern definitely applies to, uh, to others who aren't even, aren't even living in the district.
Okay. Uh, any other, uh, comments that you want to make at this point? As we said, we've got this, uh, we will be looking at it much more depth, I'm sure, as discussions continue going forward and you figure out what, how to resolve the disposition of the property. Okay. Um, one other item that, uh, wanted to mention is that at the last board meeting, we instructed Karen to approach the, uh, the Newberry Library. Well, the, uh, Jaga Library System, uh, with the proposal that we could, um, foresee some type of short-term lease for them in that building, um, so that the library could be maintained there. And, uh, Karen talked to them, uh, what, a week ago, two weeks ago, something like that?
Correct.
And then, um, got an email today that the, uh, Library Board has decided to, uh, not continue the library service in the Newberry Building. So although we extended the opportunity for them, they've decided to not continue there.
I, I think, you know, just the uncertainty on who would own the building. They certainly left the door open, uh, if the township does own, you know, take over the building and offer some community center, that they would like to be part of that discussion. So they would like to continue to be considered, but, uh, at this point, the uncertainty was that they needed to make a move with materials that they had and take care of those things. Sean and I were able to extend the internet. Uh, they've asked for thirty days to move out their materials. We certainly have given them whatever time they need. We have the internet in place, uh, that would allow them to continue their phone services and, and the security over there, along with their mechanicals, and that will be in place, uh, throughout the summer, and then we'll have to move to a different type of internet service. But they have the full range of internet services available to them for, uh, ninety days.
Um, I think that's, uh, basically where we're at at this point. With, uh, the disposition of the property. Uh, so in another week, it will officially transfer, and then we can, uh, at our next meeting, we will again be able to have some discussions and, um, start charting out a course for, for that property, once we, uh, legally are, are owning it and have responsibility for it. Are there any other, uh, reports or questions that the rest of you guys want to bring up? Okay. Uh, excuse me, next on the agenda is, uh, executive session. And, uh, like a resolution to, I'll move, we move into, uh, executive session, discuss personnel matters, appointment and or employment and negotiations. Uh, we will invite, uh, Dr. Markwart, uh, Mrs. Benakasa, and, uh, Legal Representative Mike Hannah. There will be no actions taken after the executive session. Can we have a second?
Second. Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Doctor, uh, we'll be adding, uh, Miss, Mr. Hannah as our legal attorney. He'll be joining us as well.
He mentioned.
I'm sorry.
Bill mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
I got it right for once, Karen.
Well, I was busy getting everybody voted on. There we go.
We're back, my friend.
Hello, Mr. Kish.
Welcome back.
Oh, you're the.
Should we tell Jim about all that we talked about, if not him?
There's a lot to talk about, Bill. Where'd you start?
All right, a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm sorry, y'all cut out. Who was the first?
I was. Dan.
And the second?
Beers.
Okay. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
She's muted. Muted, Mrs. Leavenworth.
Muted, I'm sorry.
I don't know how that happened. Yes.
I did that too, Kathy.
Yeah.
Happens to the best of us. Come on.
Okay. All right. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mike. I'll talk to you tomorrow, Mike. Thanks.
Take care, guys.
Thank you, Mike.